Good evening. I'd like to open tonight's meeting of the Queensbury Zoning Board of Appeals, July 22, 2020. Just for safety's sake, there are exits that, the doors that you came in through. There are also two exits in back me on the east side of the building. And also, there's a exit to the rear on the southwest side of the building. If you haven't been to our meeting before, it's actually kind of simple. There should have been an agenda on the back table. We'll call each application up, read the application into the record, allow the applicant to present his case. We'll question the applicant. If a public hearing has been advertised, then we'll open the public hearing and seek input from either people on-site here or people who want to call in remotely. Or we will accept letters also. After the public hearing, we'll poll the board, see how the case works, and then continue from there. Excuse me just a second. Hello? Yes. Well, what you should do is hang up and call back in at the time. I'll announce when two will call in. All right? We got preempted.
Is that Joe?
So, and based on polling, the board will proceed accordingly. So first off, though, we have some business to take care of. And so we need to approve the meeting minutes of June.
I'll make a motion to approve the meetings, or meetings minutes of June 17, 2020.
Do I have a motion? Can I have a second? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Urico?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
And also make the motion for the approval of the meeting minutes of June 24, 2020.
Do I have a motion? Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Urico?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
So our first application is SV5, 2020, Saxon Signs.
The applicant, this is a revised application, so I'll just read the top. The applicant proposes three wall signs, one Starbucks circular logo sign, which is 19.62 square feet, one Starbucks word sign, which is 21.75 square feet, and one drive-through sign, which is 6.96 square feet. The project includes installing freestanding digital signs, pre-menu board, one panel at 6.72 square feet, and order menu board with three panels, 22.9 square feet. The project includes directional signage consistent with Chapter 140. The relief is for the number of wall signs and number of freestanding signs.
Just before we get started, we're going to ask that just a single person come up with, for each application at a time. When you're done with your presentation or talk, please wipe down the podium and the mic, and then we'll be ready for the next person. So you're all set until you're done now?
Is there, there's wipes?
Sorry about that. Go ahead. So we've talked about this quite a bit before?
Yep, and we dropped a few signs, and they're down to...
Oh, excuse me, you have to have your name, yeah.
My name is... They dropped a few signs. I got the logo on the front, the drive-through sign right alongside of it, on one side, and then channel letters on the other side of the building. And you got your menu board on the side, the clearance bar. And the speaker, they can place your order. And then you have your directionals as well.
So do we have any questions of the applicant? Ron, I know that you were kind of vocal on this.
Well, I felt that he could have put more things on the asphalt instead of signs. But, I mean, the way I understand it, you know... Is the, is the sign that has the clearance letters, is that considered a sign?
No, sir.
No? Okay. I'm quiet. I'm good.
Anybody else have questions? So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. A public hearing has been advertised. And so if there's anybody in the audience who would like to come up, and anybody who wants to call in remotely, you can contact us at 518-761-8225. So we should have one person calling in here. Anybody, anybody in the audience want to speak of this application? Do we have anything written?
There is no written comment.
So we have to wait for two minutes? Laura, have you gotten any... Oh, here we go. This is Queensbury Zoning Board of Appeals. Okay, so Joe from Hilton Displays, do we have to have him, is that okay for the record?
Right, so you're going to put him on speaker? So he can announce himself?
Which one is the speaker?
He should be able to communicate now. Joe, can you state your name for the record?
Yes, Joe Nalasco, Hilton Displays.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I just did away on the video munching, so I'm going to step away from the computer. I just wanted to say that Starbucks has proposed two other signs on this building. And we had a preliminary meeting. We agreed to reduce the sign package to get closer to conform the code. And I'm also available to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, so at this particular time, we don't have any, any questions. So, anything else to add?
Nothing to add, just answer questions if there are any.
Okay. So seeing no questions from the audience, seeing no questions from the board, I'm going to close the public hearing. So you're basically all done at this point?
Well, he's not really, like, he's really part of the presentation because he is the actual Starbucks signage.
Okay, all right, so I can leave him on then?
You can leave him on.
Okay. So we'll just let you listen to the input from the, from the board. Is that okay? Ah, he hung up, sorry. I didn't understand that, what...
I know, and I meant to explain that, but he communicated too quick, so...
Sorry about that. So I'm going to start here with Ron.
Is that, my understanding is this J, this J monument panel, that's the same one that's going to, going to have the motel on it as well as Starbucks? Or is that a standalone by Starbucks by itself? In my understanding, it's going to be the one that's going to say motel and Starbucks. Is that correct? Yes, as on your drawing, letter number J, it's out on the road. But that's one, I think that's one that has to come up under a separate approval, doesn't it?
We approved that one already.
You already...
We already approved that?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's one, that was my issue, okay.
So I'm going to leave you on here, okay? So you can listen to it.
So I have, I have no issues with it.
Michelle?
I appreciate that you amended your proposal, but I'm still concerned about the number of signs. I think, in my opinion, it's too substantial. I'm not in favor.
Jim?
I'm in agreement. I still think there's too many signs, it's too busy. I think we've been pretty adamant, you know, in the case of the plazas. In the case of the plazas up on the strip up there, you know, where we have multiple businesses, I think we've allowed extra wall signs on the front of the building. In this instance here, I think because it's a standalone building, I see no reason to have the extra wall signs, so I'm still against it.
Catherine?
Well, is this, I think this is close to what we asked you to come back with. I agree that, I think there's too many signs, but we have them back here. We complied with what I think we asked for. Probably vote in favor.
Yeah, okay, just hang in there then. So you're in favor?
I would vote in favor.
Roy?
Yeah, I appreciate the changes they've made, but I also feel that there's still an excess of signs on this, this property. And so I would not be in favor of it.
John?
Unfortunately, what makes it very busy with, I mean, it's got, you know, with the menu boards, the clearance boards, I mean, that's a lot of, lot of lit signage. I also agree with it being a standalone building, that it probably really doesn't need to have that much signage. So I'd be against it as, as is.
So I basically support it. It's a new business, and I think it needs every opportunity that we can give it. And certainly in the areas that it's in, signs are everywhere. So I'm not as concerned with it. But unfortunately, you don't have enough yes votes here. So I think we've got to give them a pretty clear indication of what's acceptable and what's not. So John, what, what does he have to do?
I guess without designing their package, if the, if between the applicant and the individual that's on the phone, if they're willing to remove a sign, less signage, if they're willing to do that at the mo, at this moment, that might...
Well, let's, let's see what, you know, advice that we need to, to give them. And, you know, maybe we can solve this right now.
Well, I'm trying not to have you design his, his package.
Well, I gotta get, you know, nobody just said he had too many signs, but they weren't specific about which, which one, I think, so...
I think I'd be happier if the signs were maybe a little bit smaller. I mean, I think, I understand that three wall signs, that's not a bad, you know, they definitely reduced it from the original, which was five, I'm pretty sure. So I think maybe a little bit smaller in size. They don't need to be that big with, like, like Jim was saying, it's a standalone building, it's on its own, so it's, it's going to stick out. People are going to see it. So I'd be all right with the amount of signs that they're asking for, but a little bit smaller in size.
Roy?
I would be okay with that, but I'm still thinking they still have too many signs. And I, I'm not going to redesign the package for them. I think we have, we have a standard. And even though we've been pretty, pretty loose up there in terms of some of the signs that we've allowed, there is a similar, similar business not too far from there. And I don't think we're as liberal with them.
Michelle?
My issue is the number of signs, not necessarily the size. I agree, as a freestanding building, it's very visible from all directions. And I agree with Mr. Urico. I don't design signage. I appreciate the difficulty you have doing this job. But if we could lessen the variance, that's my issue. I mean, that's my job as a zoning board member, is to grant the minimum variance necessary. And I think you can achieve your goals with less signs.
How many?
I'd rather not say.
Jim?
Yeah, I think the internal signage, as far as the menu boards go, I think everybody would approve those because we've approved those on almost all the fast food restaurants in town. But I think the issue is the wall signs. You get one wall sign because you're a standalone building. I don't think you get three. I think that's way over the top.
So Joe, are you hearing this?
I think you need to put him back on speaker.
Joe, are you hearing this? Joe?
Yeah, I'm hearing.
Are you hearing this?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, so this... Sorry. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to speak, and hopefully you can hear me. Yeah, the sign package was, was reduced. We took the signs off the rear elevation. I understand the menu boards are counting as signs, which makes our overall number look a lot higher. But they're just for the, facilitate the ordering of people in the drive-through. They're not necessarily advertising.
Right, so everybody agrees that there's no problem with the ordering signs. It's the building signs that's the problem.
Okay, well, we have three building signs. Two of those are basically, one, the logo and drive-through sign are immediately next to each other to show a, a single logo. They're two different pieces. I understand they're being counted as two signs, which, which is fine. And then we have the other sign on the side elevation to capture traffic north, or students southbound on Route 9. I don't feel like that's excessive, but obviously, that's your decision, I guess.
I guess, does he understand that he could, he could potentially reduce the number of signs?
So if you could, we could proceed tonight. If you could drop one of those signs, or shrink the size of the signs. Or you could take another look at it, and we could table this, and you could come back later.
No, if we can get it approved tonight, that's definitely the goal. If we have to remove a sign, that's what we'll do.
So which, which sign would you drop?
Well, I guess we drop the Starbucks on the side of the building, because the other one's over the front door, that's the main sign.
Want to drop the drive-through?
Wants the Starbucks over the drive-through?
Wants to drop the...
Drop that one?
Okay. The lettering.
All right, Starbucks. So will that satisfy everybody's requirement?
I'd be cool with that.
Okay. All right, so that's what we're going to do.
Sounds like he's proud.
Are you good with that?
So do you want to pull the board again?
So pull the board again with the Starbucks removed from the drive-through portion of the sign. So I'm going to start with Catherine.
That's, actually, I was ready to go, but even better, still.
Jim?
I'm still against it.
Okay. Michelle?
I still think it's substantial, too substantial, so I don't agree.
Ron?
I was a forward before, I'll be forward again. He could take the beast, he could take the directional sign off the front. That wouldn't hurt anything, but anyway, I'm for it.
And John?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of my members here, too, that it is a lot of signage. It does look like a lot of signage because of the memory boards, you know, the menu boards and all that. But I think if they take that Starbucks off the side near the drive-through, I think it's a fair application.
So I think we, I think we have enough votes to go. So Ron, I'm going to ask for a motion here. Oh, excuse me, first, first we got to do...
Yeah, I'll make a motion regarding sign variance number 5-2020. Applicant's name is Saxon Signs. Based upon the information and analysis of the above supporting documentation provided by the applicant, this board finds that this will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. So we give it a negative declaration.
So a motion, can I have a second? I'll second. Call the vote.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
No.
Mr. Urico?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
And then Ron, would you make a motion for the...
Okay, I make a motion we approve sign variance SV5-2020, 1454, State Route 9. As per the document prepared by staff, we find that there will not be an undesirable change be produced to the character of the neighborhood, or will a detriment to nearby properties be created by granting, the granting of this sign variance? The, the two freestanding and three wall signs, I believe? Is that right?
Oh, no, you're doing away with one of them, right?
Yeah, we're doing away with the one sign.
Starbucks on the...
There should be two, two wall signs. And the three, three freestanding?
Three freestanding.
Okay.
Can the benefits sought by the applicant be approved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than a sign variance? We really don't think so. This is a minimum that we would approve. Is the sign variance substantial? Is, it is not minimal, but it's acceptable? Will the proposed sign variance have an adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district? We don't believe it will, as it's showing the products that they have and the direction of the vehicles. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We could say it is. In addition, the board finds that the benefit to the applicant for granting this sign variance would outweigh the resulting detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. We also find as a board that the variance under consideration is minimal necessary for that reason. I recommend we approve sign variance SV5, 2020.
So I have a motion, can I have a second?
I'll second. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
No.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Urico?
No.
Mr. Underwood?
No.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Congratulations. So our next application is AV13, 2020, Frederick and Linda McChinney.
The applicant proposes a two-story addition of a 430 square foot, that is, 816 square foot floor area. And to raise the roof line of a portion of the home to create a full second story. The existing home is 5,940 square feet of floor area, and it proposes 6,800 square feet floor area. The relief request is for setback and permeability, and that's for Section 179-3-040 dimensional requirements, Woodup Residential Zone, WR. The project includes a two-story addition where the north side setback is to be 12.9 feet, and required is 20 feet. The second story addition on a portion of the building is to be 12.9 feet, where a 20-foot setback is required. Permeability is proposed to be 71.9%, where 75% permeability is required. In looking at this area variance, we are looking at Chapter 267 of Town Law. In making a determination, the board shall consider five criteria. One, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby, to nearby properties be created by the granting of this area variance. Minor to no impact to the neighborhood may be anticipated. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. Staff says that feasible alternatives may be limited due to the location of the existing home on, on the parcel. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. The relief may be considered moderate to substantial, but relevant to the coke of setbacks. The side setback relief is 7.1 feet, and the permeability is 3.1% under what is required. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The project as proposed will have minimal impact to the environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, that difficulty may be considered self-created. Staff comments, the applicant proposes a two-story addition to an existing home, and a second story addition to a portion of the existing home. The project includes a new garage area and a new living space on the second story. A portion of the interior of the home is to be altered to accommodate the addition, including a new fireplace area and a new window scheme on the lake side of the home. And then the planning board, based on its limited review, did not identify any significant adverse impact. It cannot be mitigated with the current project proposal. And that was adopted on July 21 by a six to, six to zero margin.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, John Lapper, Fred and DeeDee, the applicants are here. And Luke Doby from Hutchins Engineering is here. They'll come up after me, after I wipe everything down. So these are a series of relatively minor, but really important changes to the applicant, so that they, this could be their permanent home on the lake. They've owned it since 96 for 24 years. It's to address a whole bunch of problems. There's water problem with how it comes off the roof at the front door, so there's a new porch area at the front door, a new entry. The chimney is just to have a nicer sitting area inside. And the main thing is that on the upstairs, everything that we're talking about is by the road, is not on the lakeside, except for placing some windows. The, there's a knee wall on the upstairs, which is not good space. So this, so the variance is just to continue the wall where it is, you know, to make the setback getting worse. It's a previous location on, on the north side. And there are neighbor letters in the file that neighbors support this, because everything is oriented towards the road, what's being done here. And then to get a better garage. One thing that's deceptive is that the size of the house that's listed, which is correct based upon, it's all on one lot, but they own the lot on the other side of the street, so there's that big boat garage, just about 2,000 square feet that's in that number. So it sounds like it's a huge home if you include that, but that's a totally separate structure. So I just wanted that on, on the record. And again, it's just that they need these changes, but it's not anything that's going to dramatically change how the house looks architecturally. It should look better. And we're, it includes changing out the septic tank and, and a bunch of stormwater facilities that don't exist now. And to that point, when we were, the planning board last night, they asked us to switch the concrete pavement for the walkways, the two walkways that are part of this proposal, for permeable pavers, which would eliminate 50% of the permeability number for that. So Luke will go over the exact numbers, but it goes up by just under 1% from, from what you have before you agreed to do that with the planning board last night. So we didn't change the plans because it's just so new, but Luke will go through that. So with that, it's an even smaller variance than what we asked for. So that sums it up, and I'll ask Luke to come up and give you the details and... come up and give you the details and show you exactly where the variances are on the map.
State your name for the record, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Board. For the record, Lucas Doby with Hutchins Engineering, the project engineer. And again, just a brief project overview is to add an 18-foot extension from where the garage is today, the same plane of the home. So it'll stay the same width, 24 feet, just 18 feet closer to Mason Road with that addition. And just because of the way the house is slightly skewed towards the property line, we're asking for two tenths of a foot more relief than what's there today. So very, very minimal request in our opinion. And the second floor will be, the ridge line will match the main north-south ridge line of the home by adding knee walls and then a little bit of a flatter roof. So that'll give them more functional second floor space to reconfigure some bedrooms. And we're taking part of the existing garage today, turn that into first floor living space to add an elevator and some mechanical space and storage. So it's a real nice architectural plan. We're very happy with. And then to relocate the front porch further away from the house, away from that drip line of the garage. And we're proposing infiltration trenches along those eve lines to provide some stormwater mitigation. And as Mr. Lapper said, a nice breakthrough with the planning board to take those concrete sidewalks that we proposed, reconstructing as concrete and turning them into permeable pavers. So that realizes a significant decrease in our permeability request. So just for the record, our total impervious request by changing out the concrete to permeable pavers is now 9,350 square feet. So that's only 35 square feet more than exists today on the site, which equals to one tenth of a percent, just for the record. So we're asking for, to go a tenth of a percent more site coverage.
So that's 72 instead of 71.9?
Seventy-two percent, 72.7 permeability as opposed to 72.8 existing.
So do we have any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Roy, he has nothing to do with it. Is there running water in the bathroom in the boat garage?
I don't believe there is. Fred, is there plumbing in the boat storage building?
No. Oh, in the boat storage garage? Absolutely no plumbing.
For the record, that's Fred McKinney's the owner.
Strictly a boat storage building.
And obviously, this is one, I know this is two different separates. You have the square footage of both pieces of property on either side. Obviously, it's one piece of property. DeeDee has one piece, not DeeDee has two pieces, right?
That's correct, Mr. Henkel. Yes, sir.
What's the square footage on your permeable pavers you're putting in there, Lucas?
It is 615 square feet.
And what's your maintenance going to be on that?
They're pretty straightforward compared to, we like them a lot better than permeable pavement. The grout lines are a little bigger, so it's generally just a nice sweep a couple times a year to keep the water flowing to the...
Yeah, but, you know, in time, the silt is going to block them up unless you have a maintenance schedule done, isn't it?
Well, we can't, they're not a drive surface, so that's quite positive, just a walking surface.
You're not going to vacuum them every couple of years? I wanted to get a vacuum business just to solve these problems. No, but very honestly, you put permeable pavers in, it's all good. But unless you keep them maintained, I mean, they gotta be kept open. Excuse me. They should be kept open because you're getting your approval today for permeability because you're doing something about it. But these things will become useless unless you look into the future. That's my, okay?
Understood.
Okay.
But Laura, isn't that part of management? I'll take...
It's something that'll come up as a planning board item. And there's a requirement about management.
Do we have other questions of the applicant? Saying none. At this particular time, I'm going to open the public hearing and request that anybody on the outside who wants to call in on this application, call us at 518-761-8225. And I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to talk about this application. Do we have any written...
There is one letter. Please let this letter serve as my approval for the proposed project at 23 Mason Road, Cleverdale, New York. We can see no adverse impacts to the lake, what's at local neighborhood, and in fact, believe it will enhance our neighborhood by increasing the value and beauty of their property. The McKinneys were kind enough to show us their proposed changes, and we think it's an attractive project. It would include our and surrounding properties and make it more interesting and beautiful place to live. We are in full support, and that's sincerely the MAFC 2012 Trust by Homa Kawhi. That's a trustee.
So we have to wait just for a couple of minutes for anybody who wishes to call in. So Laura, I was asking you, have you gotten any input on our TV ratings? Are we up with the cable news network?
Mr. Peter.
Maybe if we did something exciting, like talk about the fish intake in Lake George last week. Maybe consecutive kayaking days by Jim. We could report on that.
And canoeing. He does canoeing, too.
How we doing? Okay, so at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing and I'll poll the board, and I'm going to start with Jim.
Yeah, I think, you know, in regards to this project, the proposed addition is at the back of the property. It's not going to have any impact on the lake, although we're going to have a slight decrease in the amount of permeability. The project is being built over what's already an asphalt driveway. So I don't really see this as a major negative. So I would be in favor of the project.
Michelle?
I think that the sidelines are going to stay the same as what they already are pre-existing, so it's not going to have any further impact.
Michelle?
I'm also in favor of the project as Mr. Underwood has its point.
Ron?
I have no, I agree with the way it's presented. I have no issue with it. I think it's a good project. So I'd be in favor of it.
John?
Yeah, they're a good store to the lake. They're keeping the property very nice. I mean, there's no doubt it's a plus with the septic system across the road on the other side of the lake, on the other side away from the lake. So, and they're asking very minimal, very minimal variances there. So I'd be on board with the project.
Roy?
I'm in agreement with everybody else. I'd be in favor of the project.
Kathleen?
Yes, I'm in full favor.
And I think that the upgrades will improve the appearance of the property, and the requests are very minimal. So I support this project also. So I'm going to close the public hearing at this particular time, and I'm going to ask Michelle for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve area variance two two six point one six dash one dash one three for Frederick and Linda McKinney at 23 Mason Road. Upon review of the application materials during the public hearing, in consideration of the criteria specified in section 179 dash 14 dash 080A that's been through town code, chapter 267 in New York State law, after discussion deliberation, we find that there is not going to be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood nor a detriment to nearby properties. The request is minimal for the side yard setback and acceptable for the front yard setback because we're replacing the new addition over pavement. Feasible alternatives have already been considered by the applicant and have been considered by the board and are reasonable and included to minimize the request. The requested variance is not substantial. Again, the request numerically is a very slight change in the north side setback, and it's acceptable in the front. And not an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. It's a nice improvement, and they're improving the permeability on the property. The alleged difficulty is self-created. In addition, the board finds that the benefit to the applicant from the granting of the requested variance would outweigh the resulting detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. The board also finds that this variance request under consideration is the minimum necessary. So based on these above findings, I make a motion to approve area variance number thirteen dash 2020.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Urico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Congratulations. Do you want any of the paperwork?
No, we got to change it anyway.
Okay. So our next application is area variance sixteen twenty twenty, Ann Walsh and Mary Harris.
The applicant proposes a 585 square foot addition to an existing 1,875 square foot home. The existing floor area is 1,890 square feet, 13.9 percent. New floor area is 3,100 and 10 square feet, 22.1 percent. And the project includes a new septic system and associated site work. Project subject to subclaim for newer floor area and construction and CEAs. Relief requested is for setback, floor area, and permeability, and that's per section 179 dash three dash zero four zero dimensional requirements. The addition is to be located 18.1 foot from the front setback where a 30-foot setback is required. The side setback is to be 10.5 feet where a 20-foot setback is required. Relief is from floor area being requested where 3010, 22.1 percent is proposed, where 22 percent is the maximum allowed. Relief is also requested for permeability where 67.6 percent is proposed and 75 percent is required. Existing is 71.8 percent. Looking at the criteria, we see minor to no impact to the neighborhood may be anticipated. Feasible alternatives may be limited due to the existing house location. A variance may be required for any addition to the home due to the house orientation. The relief may be considered moderate relevant to the code. The relief on the front is 11.9 feet, side setback at 9.5 feet. Floor area is 0.1 percent. Permeability is 7.4 percent. The project as proposed will have minimal impact to the neighborhood, and the difficulty may be considered self-created. Staff comments, the applicant proposes a 585 square foot residential addition to the existing 1,875 square foot footprint. The project includes adding a basement under the new addition. The plans show the details of the addition and the location to the home. And the planning board did not, based on its limited review, has not identified any significant adverse impact that cannot be mitigated with the current project proposal. And that motion was adopted on July 21st, 2020 by a six to zero margin.
How we doing?
Good evening, Board. Again, for the record, Lucas Doby with Hutchins Engineering, the project engineer. With me are the applicant's John and Jenny Harris. Mrs. Harris is co-owner of the property with her sister, Ann Walsh, who can't be with us tonight because she lives in the Midwest. Their family has owned the property since 62. Those, I believe, are in their third or fourth generation of enjoying the property. And the home was built around that time. It's a ranch on Piers. There's no basement. They're struggling for space and storage with a lot of grandkids that love to come visit up at the lake, and their goal is to turn this into their permanent home. So to do that, they're planning to renovate the existing home, change around the interior, and we propose a 16-foot, three by 36-foot-long addition to the east side of the home. And that will allow them a new, nice kitchen, stairs down into the basement, which they proposed for the addition for storage reasons, and then a master suite in the addition as well. And then, like I said, the existing home will be reconfigured as for office space and the living room. Due to the nature of the lot, it's a small lot, there's no doubt about that. That's why we're already non-conforming with our permeability. So we're asking for, to add 565 square feet of more of new impervious areas, which is the addition. With the geometry, there's really not much to be had that we can take away. The driveway's modest and the turnaround is tight, and we really feel it's a fair proposal. And as the home is non-conforming and it's on its front setback, any expansion to it would require an area variance. So again, in summary, we're asking for the front and side setback variances, a little bit of the 565 square feet permeability relief, and then 15 square feet of floor area relief. And I don't like to ask for that variance. We understand it's, can be a touchy subject. Why we're asking for that is because the architecturals were advanced before they had their updated survey. They did some field measurements in the old description. With a modern survey, they have a little bit less land than they anticipated. So with the, in lieu of redesigning the architecturals, our logic was that we're here, we're asking for that little bit of relief from you folks. And with that, and also, the old deed, the description calls for the property to the center line of Knox Road, which used to be called a farm road or something. But with the, as it's a road by use, the modern survey shows the property line with a right-of-way. So that's why the front setbacks look, looks like we're asking for a lot of relief. Whereas, in reality, when they've owned the property for 70 years, if it was dimensioned to the center line of the road, they wouldn't need the variance. But that's not how survey law works, my understanding. Feel it's a nice project for proposing new septic, some great updated grading and stormwater management around the house to provide some mitigation. Very comfortable with the design. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I've got a question.
So do we have questions of the applicant? Yes, we do.
I'm sure this has been looked at. Why would, you know, you could do away with the variances if you built behind on the north side. Why couldn't it have been built there by the breezeway continued on the back of the house? I'm sure that was probably looked at, but is there a reason? Because then you wouldn't have to have the variances.
We would still need our expansion of a non-conforming structure variance, I believe. How the roof lines would work out, and their utility room is where like the septic line is showing, taking off. And it's just the flow of the house works a little better, in our opinion. And Mr. Harris certainly could speak to that better than I can with having the southerly part of the home, essentially a great room. So it's living room, dining room, kitchen, and the addition. And that's the design that they came up with. That's the best I can speak to it. I think if you still, if you went back 36 feet, we'd be, you might be tickling that easterly setback, but it'd be close.
Do we have other questions of the applicant?
Well, I was going to ask a very similar question. It does seem to me as though you're still going to have the exposure you want if you were in the addition. Like you said, you could even perhaps get some more... in the addition, like you said, you could even perhaps get some more, you know, floor area by enclosing the breezeway. Is it enclosed currently, or is it still existing breezeway? Eliminate that more substantial setback.
Seeing none, at this particular time, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to request anybody on the outside who has a question to give us a call at five one eight seven six one eight two two five, and see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this particular application. Do we have anything written?
There is one. I reside at thirty Knox Road. One house separates me from both applicants, Mary Harris and Ann Walsh. I have known this family for decades. I condone their application, including any variances this project might require. For many reasons, I'm sure all know to you, that town of Queensberry plus New York State must do every single thing we can to keep anyone of near-retirement age in our great New York State. Thank you for your time. You wanna make her thirty Knox Road. That is it.
So we'll have to wait for a couple minutes here. Now, you get them to do this, schedule all your meetings on one night, then you don't have to go back?
I think we're the only ones working during the shutdown. Could I just ask a question on protocol, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I just had another idea to address Mr. Henkel's concerns, but I want to say it at the appropriate time.
It's a, the public hearing's open, so you're free to speak.
Okay. It just hit me that if we move the addition to the rear, I'm gonna need a septic variance, because that's the most feasible spot to put the absorption field right to the north of the property. And that requires a twenty-foot setback to the dwelling, not to the garage, but to the dwelling itself. So if we were to stick that box behind the building, it would basically be right over where we're showing the septic tanks, and our absorption field would be right next to the addition. And that's...
They could loop that around front.
And that'd do some funky loop design.
All good. So, hearing from nobody on the outside, I'm going to close the public hearing, and at this time, I'm going to poll the board, and I'm gonna start with Roy.
Yeah, I think we have, the overriding issue here is that it's point-three acres, and whatever they do is gonna require a variance of some sort. So I think they've done the best they can with what they have, and I'd be in favor of the project.
John?
Yeah, they're not on the lake. That is definitely a little side road. It's not a main road. So there's some pluses, plus you got a new septic system going in, that's gonna be good for the neighborhood. So it's very minimal. You know, you got fourteen feet over the floor variance. The setbacks, you really can't help, all those houses are pretty close there on that little side street. Permeability's not a huge thing, because it's not on the lake. So I think it's a good, good project before it.
Ron?
Yeah, the house was a pre-existing non-conforming on the front setback, so really, they're only asking for the back. I think it's a minimal request. I'd be in favor of the way it's presented.
Michelle?
I'm also in favor, as proposed.
Jim?
Yeah, the plus side is the new septic system, although I don't really think they have any impact on the lake negatively at the present time either. I think the setbacks off Knox Road are gonna remain essentially the same as what is existing now, so I'd be in favor of the project.
Kathy?
I think it's all more than minimal, but still, considering improvements yourself can go out there.
And the way I view it is, what we're getting is more than what we're giving. We're getting a new septic system, an improvement in the, in the look of the, of the property, and what we're giving up is very minimal, so I support this project also. So at this particular time, I'm going to ask for a motion from Jim.
I'll make a motion to approve area variance sixteen dash two thousand twenty. Again, it's Ann Walsh and Mary Harris at twenty Knox Road. Having listened to the appeal this evening, the addition will be located eighteen point one feet from the front setback where a thirty-foot setback is required. The side setback will be ten point five feet where a twenty-foot setback is required. Relief from the floor area ratio is being requested at three thousand ten, which will be twenty-two point one, so it's point one percent over twenty-two percent proposed. Relief is also requested for permeability, where sixty-seven point six percent is proposed and seventy-five percent is required, and they are dealing with runoff on the property by creating a swell in the back there. As far as the approvals here this evening, we do not note any undesirable changes in the character of the neighborhood nor detriment to nearby properties. This project is located on a very small point-three acre lot, and it's been well-engineered to work. As far as feasible alternatives, the board did consider other alternatives, closing in the breezeway, but it was explained that the septic system would need a variance at that point, so we don't wish to go there at this point. As far as the requested variance being substantial, it's not really considered substantial. It's slightly decreasing the permeability, but we feel that the floor area ratio, even though it's maximal, with the lot size, is not unreasonable. As far as adverse impacts on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, we do not note any. As far as the difficulty being self-created, it is self-created, but it's also created by the fact that this is a very small, minuscule lot. In addition, the board finds the benefit to the applicant from granting requested variance outweighs any denial that we might make, because we do not note any resulting detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. So at this point, the board moves that the variance is the minimum necessary, and we move for its approval.
So we have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Urico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Congratulations. A little scribble on that one.
So the next application on the schedule is AV fifteen twenty twenty.
This particular application has been moved to the first meeting in September. There is a public hearing advertised. Is there anybody here for that public hearing? Because that public hearing will be moved to September, is it fifteen?
It'll actually be re-advertized, because we don't know if there's gonna be any changes, and I'd rather be, I'd more comfortable having the public hearing re-advertized.
Okay.
So you will need to make a motion to move that application to the first September meeting.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we move application AV fifteen twenty twenty to the first meeting in September. Do we have a motion? Can I have a second? Call the vote.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Urico?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
So our next application is AV twenty twenty twenty, Margaret Wallace.
The applicant proposes to construct a one-story, three-hundred-and-eighty square foot addition here. An open-decked area currently exists on a corner lot. The existing home is nineteen hundred and seventy-two square feet footprint with an existing twenty-three hundred square foot floor area. The new footprint is to be twenty-three fifty-two with a floor area of twenty-six eighty-eight square feet. Relief requested is for setback, per section one seventy-nine dash four dash zero three zero, dimensional requirements. The applicant proposes to replace the patio area of three hundred and eighty square feet with a single-story addition of three hundred and eighty square feet. The addition is to be twenty-five feet from the rear property line where a thirty-foot setback is required. And looking at our criteria, minor to no impact to the neighborhood may be anticipated. Feasible alternatives may be considered limited due to the house location and that the parcel is a corner lot. Relief requested may be considered minimal, relevant to the code. Relief requested for the rear setback is five feet. The project may be considered to have minimal impact on the physical or the environmental conditions of the area, and the difficulty may be considered self-created. Staff comments: The applicant proposes to remove an existing deck attached to the air, deck, deck area attached to the home and replace it with a two-story addition for additional living space in the home. The plans show the existing survey with the setbacks of the deck area. The floor plan shows the layout of the home and where the addition is to be. Also include our photos of the deck.
Say your name for the record, please.
Margaret Wallace, twelve Warden Road.
How are you?
Good, good.
Do you have anything to add?
Well, just the fact that it's five feet at that particular corner, but then it slopes out, and it's thirty-one feet from the other corner. So it's a right triangle that's five feet by seventeen feet. It's a very small part of the, the addition is gonna be less than thirty feet in a very small triangle to the back of my property.
So do we have any questions of the applicant? Pretty straightforward. So at this particular time, a public hearing has been advertised, and so I'm going to open the public hearing and invite anybody watching on the outside to call in at five one eight seven six one eight two two five. And is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? I don't have much of an audience left, do we?
Hey, Margaret, I need that name for Ellen.
Okay.
Please.
Roy, do we have anything written?
Here is all written.
So we just have to wait for two minutes for the people to call in from the outside.
Can we talk about the table one?
No.
I can give you a little feedback. So what happened at the planning board level is that he didn't show up to that meeting?
Oh.
I did, that's probably what you're asking. So I did have a conversation with him this afternoon, and he indicated he misunderstood that he needed to attend a planning board meeting. So then he understood he wasn't coming to the night meeting, so I said, "In September, we will see you."
Well, we approved that two years ago.
He, he has since changed the footprint.
Oh, really?
And it's, and there's less, less relief requested, but it's still relief.
Did we approve that?
Two years ago. He, he came each year, and he asked for extensions. Thank you.
You can, and your husband's name is John.
Okay.
Not one more sentence.
No, he kept it current by coming for extensions each year.
Okay.
What you're saying, Laura, is he changed the footprint.
I remember that now. Yeah, you're right. That's how, I thought you were getting old, Ron, but you must be keeping it privileged.
It's just the white hair. Be nice, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
So you said you're doing some stormwater management on that?
Pardon me?
You're doing some, like, plantings or anything like that? Are you doing any kind of increase? I mean, I see you're taking a deck off, but are you gonna add it?
Around the deck, there's already a four-foot box. I don't know what is gonna, what's gonna happen to it.
I was saying, your permeability's going to, you would think it would be getting worse if you're putting a building there compared to...
It's the same, same hard surfacing. It doesn't change.
The deck is infirmal.
See, the stone around the deck is, I don't know, probably going to remain. But no, yes, I'm losing some permeability.
But we're not looking to approve.
No, I realize that. I was just wondering where...
So at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to poll the board, and I'm gonna start with Kathy.
Yes, I am in favor. I think that there's very little change there, and what relief is asked for is pretty minimal.
Jim?
It's a simple request. I have no problem with it.
Michelle?
I agree. I think I'll fit in the character of the neighborhood. You know, any alternatives are limited based on your mom.
Ron?
Yeah, I think it's a minimal request. I'd be in favor.
John?
I agree also.
Roy?
I am also in favor.
And I think it's a nice little improvement, and so therefore, I will support the project also. So with that being said, Kathy, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
Okay. With regard to, I'm gonna take it. With regard to file number AV twenty twenty twenty, applicant named Margaret Wallace, we vote upon review of the application materials supplied during, oh no, this is the right part, during the public hearing and upon consideration of the criteria identified in the town code, Queensberry Town Code and New York State law, discussion of liberation rules, zone where the fields find its follows. There is not a undesirable change to character of the neighborhood or any detriment to nearby properties. The feasibility, the feasible alternatives are minimal, have been considered by the board and are reasonable and have been needed to minimize the request. The requested variance is not substantial, only five feet on one side, very little change to the existing footprint. There is not an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. The alleged difficulty is self-created. In addition, the board finds that the benefit to the applicant from the granting of the door variance would outweigh the resulting detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. The board also finds that variance request under consideration is the minimum necessary. We have no conditions to attach.
So I have a motion. Can I have a second? Jim? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Urico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want your paperwork here?
I do.
Could I, could I ask you a question, Margaret?
Sure.
Why did you get this septic barricade? Did they ask you for it, or you just did it?
It's new floor area, it's a requirement.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Mostly want some wraps back.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Did you wipe down the podium? Did you wipe down the podium?
Pardon me?
Did you wipe down the podium?
No, I did not.
Oh, my God.
Ah, we're gonna have to dock you. Give us all that stuff back.
I think we should.
I don't know if I touched it.
And the microphone also.
Okay.
Thank you. Throw it away right there. Right there, there's a wastebasket right here, Margaret.
I don't have to take a moment?
No.
Bye-bye.
So our next application is AV twenty-one dash twenty twenty, Greg Ball and Julie Austin.
The applicant proposes to construct a seven hundred and twenty square foot second garage on the property. The existing home is one thousand four hundred and forty square feet with an attached six hundred and sixteen square foot garage, a six hundred and sixteen square foot fourth and patio area. Relief requested for a second garage, according to section one seventy-nine dash five dash zero two zero.
Relief requested for a second garage according to SEPT, uh, chapter 179-5-020, accessory structure garage. The applicant proposes a second garage, but only one garage is allowed. The garage is to be 720 square feet. Looking at the criteria, the project may be considered to have little to no impact on the neighboring properties. The feasible alternatives may be considered to include construction of an addition to the existing garage. Relief may be considered substantial relative to the code. Relief is requested for a second garage where only one is allowed. The project as proposed may be considered to have minimal to no impact on the environmental condition of the site or area, and the project as proposed may be considered self-created. The staff comments, the applicant proposes to construct a detached 720-square-foot garage. The applicant has indicated there is an existing attached garage of 902 square feet used for vehicle storage and house lawn maintenance. The new garage is for storage of items that will not fit into the home, and so they are stored on the interior instead of the exterior area.
Greg Ball? Say your name for the record. Okay.
Sorry about that. Greg Ball.
Anything to add?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Just looking, I think it would be a better suit, kind of tucked in the back versus heading onto the front where we lose parking spaces in the driveway.
So do we have questions of this particular applicant?
You, you have two sheds, right? You have a shed on the side of the building and one in the back, right?
Yes. But in the, what do you mean?
Well, isn't there a shed in the front too, kind of? Can I see a little?
It's, it's, it's just a little plastic thing for Buzzie.
Okay. And of course, you have that other one there. Are you willing to make a, I mean, that's a 24 by 30, and you're plus, you're going to have storage on the top?
Yeah, just dry storage.
And you got, how much, what do you have, nine, you said 900 square foot garage attached to it now?
I don't think it's 900.
I don't think it's 900.
Oh, I was gonna say, I saw, I think six, was it six?
616 square.
Okay, 616.
It's just a regular, and it's got stairs to the basement too, so it's kind of cut up in the, in the existing garage.
Now, do you know in your development area there? I, I drove around. I really couldn't see any other second garages. Do you know how many second garages are in your development?
There's a, there's a third car, there's a couple of third cars.
Yeah, I saw the third.
Add it on to the house.
Right, I know Buzzy McLaughlin and stuff. He has third, but they have, some have third, but no one has a second garage in that area that...
Everything in that immediate neighborhood.
Okay, I was gonna say, I think I saw any. Okay.
Is there going to be any hard surfacing to this? I mean, what are you, what are you putting in this building?
Woodwork and tools and, and, and storage and, and the outdoor equipment and stuff like that.
Are you going to do any hard surfacing to it, or you're going to have lawn in front of it?
Oh, there'd be, uh, there'd be lawn in front of it as of now.
Okay, because your drawing doesn't show any hard surfacing.
No.
So I assume, will you be putting any water or electric in there?
Electric I would like to put in there, not water.
Water, okay. If you put water in, you put a bathroom store your mother-in-law.
Not unless I get kicked out of the house, right?
Uh, thank you. No, no, but, uh, seriously, no. You're not going to use it for a business or anything?
No.
Personal store?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I guess, I, I have a question. The difference between a garage and a, um, auxiliary structure would be the size of the door. If you could reduce your door to six feet, then, um...
Wouldn't be a second garage.
...variance for a second garage. Would that be a, an option?
Reduce the size of the door to six feet?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I'd like to be able to put a vehicle in it if possible.
So it's going to be more than just a storage area? You're talking about actually splitting vehicles in there?
For, to work on or something like that, or if you need to store, um, you know, motorcycle, so...
Other questions?
I have a quick question. You said you were going to store woodworking equipment in there?
No, you didn't be able to work on stuff.
Correct, so it's going to be a workshop?
It'll be a workshop as well, correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? So at this particular time, I'm going to open the public hearing. If anybody's on the outside and wants to comment, give us a call at 518-761-8225. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this matter, come forward. Do we have any written input?
There is no written comment.
So just clarification on the accessory structure. They're limited to two totaling no more than 500 square feet. So it would be a, if it, if the doors were to be shrunken, it would still be a, it would be a variance for the size.
You're not willing to do away with that shed? You're, you're going to keep that shed even if you build that big garage?
I would keep it. I mean, if it's leased ago, maybe it, I suppose it could. It would be better if everything has a home versus being out when possible.
Ball's in your court, Karen.
Yep, we still have a couple seconds.
Okay.
Got one more minute.
I have another question, if you don't mind. Uh, you have a full basement?
Yes.
Thanks.
So at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to poll the board, and I'm going to start with Jim.
Yeah, I think, you know, under normal circumstances, we're dealing with smaller lots here, but this is a pretty large lot compared to most of them that we deal with in suburban part of Queensbury. There seems to be a legitimate request for this additional space here. It's a minimal request for what he needs for his needs for storage and for workshop space, so I'd be in favor of it.
Kathy?
Um, I'm kind of torn on this one because I think in the past, and you've been on the board longer, so you'd be able to help me with this. When we've approved these second garages, it's been more when there was like very large lots, like five acres or 10 acres. And this is just under one acre. And yet it's wooded, you know, there, there would be some concealment. I mean, somewhere, we gotta draw the line. I mean, I don't know what the intention of the board was when they said no second garages, but I'd hate to see a precedent giving them. Definitely, if I would even consider it, I think I, I'd ask them to get rid of that extra shed. It's just too many outdoors.
So are you no, or are you yes with a condition?
Help me. I, I think I would no.
Okay.
A, a, maybe a yes with conditions, but a no without conditions.
Roy?
Yeah, I think this project is excessive. I look at the, the criteria here. I think it could have a detrimental impact on the neighboring properties. If they get a second garage, I can see other properties maybe thinking about it. There seem to be some feasible alternatives to construction of the additional garage. I think the relief is substantial, and the project as proposed is self-created. I think, you know, just wanting a second garage is not necessarily a good reason to have, that this property's not, usually we consider sometimes excessive sizes of lots, but the code really doesn't specify size of lot. It says one per property, so I'd be against it.
John?
Yeah, I'm having a little trouble with this one also. Like I said, I drove around the properties and didn't see any other second garages. I did see some three-car garage, which makes sense. But he's also, that would make it three accessory buildings, basically you could say, with the two sheds in that building, that's a big garage too, with the storage above it. So with it being less than an acre, I'd have a hard time with approving this as is. So I'd be against it as is.
Ron?
I like the fact that there's no hard surfacing to it. To me, it represents that the building is going to be used not as a everyday use, but to, to take care of a shop and/or when he buys his Corvette, he can store his Corvette in there in the wintertime. I think that giving up the shed would be the right thing to do because you're building this big building. I understand that in, in where we live in the great Northeast, although we have, he's got two other garages in the wintertime, gets crowded with the snow blower and the lawnmowers and stuff. I'm in favor of the project with one caveat, which is get rid of the sheds.
Michelle?
I'm as torn as everyone else, or most everyone else about this project. Ron, I, I hear what you're saying about the pavement is, should we put in a condition about, um, the, the driveway in the future? No driveway in the future? I don't know.
You can. You can. It's just a policing issue.
Yes.
You can, but it's a, it's a code enforcement item.
I know, I know. So that's why, so ultimately, I don't want to delay this any longer. I am reluctantly in favor because I know we all need storage, so...
Yeah, I mean, we're, I'm sorry, Mike's going to talk.
Just have an hour. The public hearing is closed, so, so we're just debating among ourselves here. So we got, uh, let's see, one, two, three noes, uh, two yeses, and a conditional yes. And so I've got a problem with this because if we okay a second garage, this, I spent time looking at the area also, and there's nobody else with a second garage. So it kind of puts us in a bind here if we try to, you know, not allow other people to put a second garage in. We've generally approved second garages for larger lots, you know, three, five, 10 acres. But this is only a single lot, and there isn't anybody else around to support the second garage. What I would support would be a larger auxiliary building as opposed to a second garage. That would take us off the, off the hook, um, you know, may give us a little bit more freedom. So I'm going to be a no as it stands.
I, I, I like that thinking and, and possibly even a little reduction either in size or eliminating some sheds so we don't go too far beyond that 500-foot accessory structure.
So as it stands right now, you don't have enough yes votes. So you've got a couple of options up here. You can force the vote, but you're not going to do well. You can table your application, take a look and, you know, see, you know, what, you, you got a couple people that would support it if you got rid of your, um, other shed. Or you could reconsider the building to be a larger auxiliary building and go for a, you know, application or a variance for a larger accessory structure. So the choice is up to you.
Okay, so that's mean if I say that, I would agree to like get rid of the shed, which, you know, is a problem, and, and change the door size?
The door size is what makes it a garage. So if it's less than eight feet, then it's an auxiliary structure. If it's eight feet or more, then it's a garage.
Six feet, isn't it?
Six, six. It's six.
Oh, six feet. So, so larger than six feet, it's a garage. Six feet or less, it's an auxiliary structure.
Correct. And so I'll just clarify, if you were to change the size of the door, you'd still have to come back for a variance because right now it's advertised as a second garage. So you can do two, if you table it this, this, tonight, you can consider either one of those opportunities and then present that information in a way so it'd be on a September meeting, not, it wouldn't be on August, but it would be a September meeting. It gives you a month to think about it. You would work with staff, myself, or others, and just confirm how you want to move forward.
Laura, what size accessory structure would be allowed without leaving a, a variance?
So he's allowed 500 square feet total. You're allowed two structures on the site, but you can have no more than 500.
So no matter what, he has to come back for another structure? Because he already has, uh, there is, what's the...
It's 140, the one, one is 140 square feet. Then whatever that other little one on the side, but...
You would be allowed another 360 square feet?
Right. And I don't know if the, the side structure counts.
With a, with a smaller door, he wouldn't have to come back.
He wouldn't have to.
Right?
I mean, I wouldn't mind going with a smaller door. I just, like I said, I want to be able to get a, at some point to work on or whatever.
If it's larger than 360 feet, you'd have to come back here for a...
So actually, your, your best option here is to table this and, you know, work with the staff a little bit. So could I have a motion?
Is that what he's going to do?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to table area variance 21-20-20 until the meeting of September.
You can put it on either one. It doesn't, at this point, it doesn't...
Would you be ready in August? Is one in August?
You cannot, I can't, no, because the August deadline has already passed.
Okay, so September?
It would have to be September.
So there'll be two meetings in September.
Okay. So September, the first meeting is September with the middle of the, in the...
By August 15.
August 15.
Or the sum date in August.
So you have to submit your new information to Laura before August 15.
All right.
So I have a motion. Could I have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Call the vote, please.
Call me.
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Uriko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
We'll see you in September, right? Long, right? So I, I make a motion that we conclude our proceedings, proceeding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.